Yeah.
Sheriff has your shoulder. Oh, man.
There he is.
Good morning.
Hey, Brian, talk him into doing a replacement. Don't, don't mess with that other stuff. It's easy. Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March third meeting.
Oh, getting it on.
Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting older and ask Mr. Slade if he would, uh, for a word of prayer.
God, we, we come before you and thank you for being here with us today, for your presence, your power. But I pray that you would give these men the wisdom that they need today. Help us, Lord, as we deliberate to make the kinds of decisions that are in keeping with your will that please you. But I thank you for this community and all of the many blessings that you have poured out on us. I thank you for the excitement of new beginnings. I thank you, Lord, that even today you are at work helping to chart a course for our community that will help every citizen of our county to have a better quality of life. God, we just are abundantly appreciative of all that you are doing and will continue to do. And we pray that you would, uh, superintend today, that you would be pleased with our work today. Christ name.
Amen. Do we have any public comments? Anybody have public comments? I would ask, uh, I think Mr. Brian's got something. You want to step forward?
So, thank you, Mr. President and Board, for giving me just a few minutes. I just want to let you all know, many of y'all are aware Friday, we had a quite large Woods brush fire. Um, so I was just going to update you all on that, let you know about eleven o'clock, we received our first phone call on it. And basically, it was an all hands on deck. Of course, you had, all the E O C personnel was there. Uh, we did an all call with our volunteer fire departments, which means we reached out to everyone and said, hey, if you can help, come. Because it was a Friday afternoon, we didn't know what kind of turnout we were going to get personnel wise. And boy, did they show up. I mean, they were everywhere from Southwest, Cleary to Star, to Lake Harbor, Leesburg. Everybody came, uh, to the address there off Noblen Bridge Road and, and to help with that. Um, I want to thank the sheriff, uh, he had several, his personnel were out there. They brought their rook, which has a blade that can help us with the brush fire. His investigators were out there with gloves on, they were out there helping as well. Um, I want to thank Mike Harrison, his group, uh, they brought dozers out there, skid steers, which is ultimately what you need and that type of stuff to create your fire lanes to stop it from advancing. Uh, Pafford was on scene, uh, dispatch did a phenomenal job, uh, of help coordinating that massive number of people. I think we had anywhere from over a hundred, hundred to a hundred and fifty, uh, personnel, uh, was on site. So coordinating that, they did a great job, Sheriff. Um, also, uh, uh, Mr. Hicks was out there, uh, as well. There were, and if I started naming people individually, I, I know I would miss somebody. Um, but just wanted to let you all know that everybody came out when they were needed and helped. Obviously, our departments are all strong individually, but whenever we work together, uh, set in unity, we can, uh, definitely make, uh, our efforts strong and more efficient and which turns out to benefit for Rankin County citizens. So, just wanted to update you all on that and publicly thank those people.
Well, we thank, uh, we thank y'all for what y'all do, you know, and all the departments. I, I know it's a hard job and can be frustrating, especially like on a Friday evening. But, you know, for everybody to step up and come out and pull together, we just, you know, thank you for what you do and thank everybody for what they do and, you know.
It was great teamwork from everybody that was involved.
Brian, is there anything that y'all, seem that y'all didn't have there? I mean, far as equipment or, I mean, anything?
Not, not short of an airplane that could dump water out. Um, everybody, like I said, you know, we didn't have access as far as E O C wise to the dozers and the skid steers and the road department did. Uh, we had a drone or two, but the sheriff's department has multiple drones. I mean, that just opened the possibilities there to be able to be more efficient. So we had everything that, that we needed on scene. Uh, forestry got there, you know, about an hour later, um, and, and they were able to do their thing as well. Yeah, so, um, from Friday morning, well, when this fire started that I'm talking about, until our last fire that I was made aware of, which was yesterday afternoon in Cato, uh, we had over fourteen calls for Woods fires or brush fires. And it was due to the weather conditions. I mean, it was, you know, twenty, twenty-five, thirty mile an hour gusts along with very, very low humidity. So, there was no burn ban in place. Uh, however, we were doing as much as we could to advise people, hey, please don't burn. But, you know, everybody's like, well, this won't happen to me. I've got it under control. And then we end up showing up to help you out, so, which is what we're there for.
I wasn't there, but I was researching it on A I. And I did a lot of backup that you may not have even realized.
Well, we appreciate that. You, you and A I.
Tremendous, tremendous.
Appreciate that, so, thank y'all again.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Alright. Approval of hold minutes.
Chink, chink, chink. Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Consent agendas, everybody had time to look over consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Ms. Stacy with the tax assessor.
No, 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 we're actually adding some. We're getting some bills out there, some new bills. Alright, um, item A, petitions to adjust the twenty-four home state exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
Brad made a motion, Jay seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item B, requesting, uh, change of assessment for twenty-four real property assessments.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item C, uh, PIN two nine five seven one didn't generate a tax bill for twenty-four. Uh, it was sold to a new owner, overlooked, so we're just requesting that the collector's office generate a new bill for twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Item D, authority for the collector to void the twenty-four tax bill for PIN one one two six zero. This PIN should have been exempt, this is, uh, one of the Center for Violence Prevention parcels.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Pittman, purchase clerk.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm here to request for, uh, authority to accept a reverse auction for one or more, uh, new hydraulic excavators at a cost of two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents per each.
That's each?
Each. Well, we're, we're planning on only Brian one, but in, in the future, if we decide, during the year, we decide to buy another one, if we have money, funds available.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Harrison, road manager.
Road work copies for, uh, February is scheduled for March.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, A T and T permit for South Pearson Road.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Got a ceasefire for White Road. Fiber optic.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Steve seconded motion, any further discussion?
We, uh, we should have all the utilities and fiber optic and anything else you could want White Road now, shouldn't we?
Should.
Seems like a pretty popular place. I, uh...
Hold on, all in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, got an Atmos, uh, permit to be installed on Gunner, Shannon Door Drive.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Center Point Gas Line on Mill Run Road, West Ridge, District two.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discuss- discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, also got a Center Point, District four, on Oakdale, Bang Gas Line.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Oak Ridge.
You need a pair of glasses?
Well, I broke mine in variety later, Steve. I ain't been this old. So, Oak Ridge Drive, excuse me.
Since you don't have any glasses, that looks like all you've got.
That's all I got.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Parker?
Morning. Uh, we have one item, which is the approval of two L S B P programs. This is to replace bridges on Myers Road and Old Highway eighty. Be two separate programs. Uh, just to let y'all know, we have seven L S B P bridges that are posted for waitlaments now. Uh, one of them is being handled with an E R B R project. One of them is in the remaining ARPA projects left. Uh, these two will take you down to three. Uh, that'd be Spillway Road, Quinn Drive, and Barnett. Barnett will be the next one on the list. Spillway's obviously the big one, it's got all the utilities and all relocated. But, uh, these are the two we're recommending programming right now.
Motion to approve.
I second. Steve made a motion, I seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Hopefully, uh, we're waiting on the program to be approved right now. Uh, but the, I mean, we approved it in here, waiting on State Aid to approve it. Uh, hopefully by late summer, we'll be ready to, uh, start it. Start, start the construction of it.
Mr. Slade?
First item under my section, gentlemen, is to set a public hearing for March the seventeenth for the Vineyards at Castle Woods Dimensional Variants, four twenty Vine Drive. Just need a motion to set that hearing for March seventeen, nine A M.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Uh, the next item, uh, is a public hearing on the Roy Anderson Conditional Use Permit at five oh six Kirsten Way. This is a District four property. Uh, I'll open that public hearing. Mr. Anderson is requesting a conditional use permit to place up to five additional rental homes on Kirsten Way. This property is a sixteen acre parcel, it's zoned R E one and currently contains two existing homes. In July twenty ten, Mr. Anderson was granted an approval for a conditional use permit to add rental homes to the property. However, he did not proceed with the development and the...
You said two thousand and ten?
Two thousand and ten. July two thousand and ten. He was, he was granted, he was granted a conditional use permit to add the rental homes to the, add rental homes to the property. However, he did not proceed with the development and the permit is expired. So he is now seeking approval to move forward with his original plan. Uh, at the January thirtieth Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Anderson was advised to coordinate with Tim Parker, county engineer, and with Mike Harrison, road manager, to develop a, a plan for bringing the private drive up to county road standards. This is, uh, District four property. That public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the Roy Anderson Conditional Use Permit. Is anyone here to speak on that matter?
Can, can we get an update on the road situation?
Do we have a picture? Do we have a map that we can look at where we can? I'm, I am familiar where it's at, but everybody else needs to know.
Ashton, you pull that map up for us, please.
Was he willing to do a road up to county standards?
Uh, he's got me, we played phone tag, I had to talk to him.
There was, uh, there was supposed to have been a meeting, uh, and Mr. Anderson called to cancel that meeting, if I recall correctly.
We have, we have a redevelopment meeting set up with him.
He, he canceled the meeting.
Let, let's get more into depth of where it's at and why we're talking about, uh, this private road and bringing it up to county standards. It's, it's a, you wouldn't think, but it's a good bit of traffic right in this little area. There's several homes in there and it's a private, uh, it's, I think they didn't take their garbage out to, uh, Holly Bush, Adams, out to Adams. And we have...
There's an intersection there, Steve, I think.
Yeah.
At...
Adams.
Adams and then the, uh, the primary access.
We have brought, and, and the developers have brought Adams Road up to where it used to be a very small, where two cars really couldn't hardly pass. And this comes off of Adams.
Yes, sir.
And... Can you show the drive? Or is it?
Where the power line that runs down the power line?
Well, do, do y'all know if it was...
It's a driveway, really, yeah.
Was he still planning on doing this if he didn't come to the pre-development meeting? Does he still have intentions or...
No idea, sir. No idea.
Right, nobody's heard from him, he didn't come to the...
This is the drive.
Steve, is the road that we're talking about turning right, right here, or is it going straight? At this intersection?
Turn right by the sign.
Turn right.
Two houses in there right now.
Are we, are we talking about before that post and that gate? Or are we talking about beyond that? Because I asked that specifically because we had a fire there.
Yeah.
Several years back, not several, a couple of years back. And we had a very hard time getting a fire truck in there beyond that gate.
I remember that.
And, uh...
Um...
That, that road definitely needs to be improved.
I would say, the discussion, we don't have a discussion until we're past, uh, coming to an agreement on the road. Sir, sir. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to deny the request.
Brad made a motion to deny the, the request, Jay seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
For the record, that public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item, gentlemen, is a public hearing on the Rankin County initiated rezoning request. Uh, this for three, three seventy-nine Highway forty-three south. This is a District, District four parcel. Rankin County is initiating a rezoning of a seven acre parcel that's located at three seventy-nine Highway forty-three south. This will be rezoned from A, currently A two agricultural to C two general commercial. This property is adjacent to the Marathon Gas Station, uh, and is in close proximity to Interstate twenty. It, uh, was historically utilized as a church before being repurposed as a storage warehouse. Current owner has obtained a renovation permit to transform the existing structure into office spaces. Reclassifying this property to C two would better align with the intended commercial use and the surrounding development patterns. And it's also very, in very close proximity to the southern boundary of the town of Pilahatchee. Uh, and so, uh, that, that would explain why the Marathon is sitting, where it's sitting right there at Interstate, uh, Frontage and Highway forty-three Frontage and why the city would classify that as commercial under its own zoning. So this would better align with the city's zoning that is immediately adjacent. And so this would take care of, uh, not only positioning this property for its current use, but for its likely intended use. So it would be my recommendation that the board, uh, entertain any opposition to this request and then after an opportunity to be heard, that the board would consider rezoning this property as indicated by the staff. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Rankin County initiated rezoning of the seven acre parcel at three seventy-nine Highway forty-three south? Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter?
Not necessarily opposition, but just to speak on.
Sure. You need to come forward, sir.
Yeah, you can just come, come on.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, gentlemen, uh, my name is Buck Allman. I currently reside at seven oh four Bryn Mawr Street in Brandon.
Bucky.
Bucky. If we want to get technical, I'm S L Allman the fourth.
The fourth?
The fourth, yes, sir. Uh, most of you guys probably know me, know my family. Uh, we're lifelong residents of Pilahatchee, have been there for seven generations. Uh, we purchased this property mainly out of a need for my wife and I's personal use and it just had a few more opportunities than we realized initially. So, yes, we do want to put our personal offices in there, uh, which I do a lot of sound lighting, you know, staging, entertainment, that kind of thing. And, uh, she has an insurance affiliation that would be going in that building. Well, we have a lot of extra space that we've been approached about, uh, leasing that space for other things, office use. Uh, we've had a indoor baseball facility come to us, we've had cheerleading academy come to us. We've had a lot of things, so we were just kind of curious as to what that would entail for us as far as the usage of that building, what it's going to do for us for taxes. And also from a utility standpoint, is there a way we could get gas out there? And not have a propane tank? Um, and then, uh, one of the other things that we were talking about was...
Just the address.
Oh, the address. So the address that we were given, which was three seventy-nine, uh, Highway forty-three, is no longer correct. It is, uh, one twenty-seven East Forty-three Circle. So I didn't know if you guys needed to make note on that so that it was correct.
Yeah, we actually rezoned, not by the address, we rezoned by the parcel identification.
Gotcha.
It's not going to impact the address, it's not going to impact the efficacy of the rezoning.
But to answer your question, your taxes are going to go up, why don't you rezonate to C two? What is it, well, residential?
Keep in mind that, uh, that the tax impacts are relatively unaffected by the underlying zoning classification. There may be some aspect of the raw land, but those improvements have been being captured. I wish Stacy was still here. The improvements have been being captured the minute that they come online and there's a certificate of occupancy established. So the vast majority of the abhorrent tax implications are exactly what you're feeling now. As the structures are improved or expanded, uh, the, the tax assessor's office will pick up those improvements over time. And so you'll see impact to your abhorrent by virtue of the value increase from the improvements that are made. But the raw land is pretty much set like it is. It, it will probably go up in value once it becomes official that it is classified as commercial. But the truth of the matter is, if it remains A two and y'all are going to run it as a commercial operation, you've got a zoning problem. And so any lender that you work with is going to have a problem, uh, with that. Uh, they're going to want something adjusted or fixed. You, you really are boxed in. If you want to, if you want to use this as a commercial structure, it needs to be rezoned, so...
We, we initially purchased it thinking it was commercial property because that's how it was presented to us. So we were pretty surprised to find out that it was agricultural property.
Right, most of the time, nobody knows anything about it until a lender gets involved and somebody checks it and says, whoa, the, the use doesn't match the other one's.
This is inside the city limits, right?
No. The county line is my property line.
Yep.
So, uh, so I, I would say that you are going to feel some abhorrent impact, uh, just like everybody else. Um, but you, you need, this needs to happen and with it being county initiated, uh, it takes all the pressure off of you guys.
So we, we are, we are not opposed to it. We just need a little clarification on that.
Bucky, the increase in what you are going to feel is more in line with the value of the property going up as it, for commercial property, people are going to see it as more valuable. And then as you, uh, develop it with buildings and the value of those built go up, then, you know, there's a sense of fact. Uh, but just the terminology, people get scared of a knee jerk. Oh, it's going from, you know, residential agriculture to commercial, fixing to cut my throat. That's really, you thought it was going to get cut one way or the other if you were to build a building out of it.
Let the benefit of comforting wind out of there.
That's comforting, isn't it?
So, this board also has nothing to do with public utilities like gas, water, sewer. That's not our bag, we're not in that business. So, uh, you'll have to work directly with the appropriate gas supplier that has the certificated area for this. And I, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, Center Point, yeah, Center Point, but they said they don't have any services south of I twenty.
Right. So... That's, that's going to be a problem. Uh, it has always been a problem for this area developing out because there's a real challenge in utilities. It's hard for the city to get anything that far south away from its utility situation. So there's going to be some challenges to get utilities there, but, uh, you're going to already see an increase in the value just by virtue of the rezoning, fixing the rezoning. It's much more marketable to a broader community once that's fixed. Uh, it won't come up in as some sort of zoning issue. So it's, it's definitely in your favor for it to happen this way.
Like I said, we, we weren't opposed to it, we just wanted to get a little clarification on it. And also on the usage of the property. Uh, do we need to get conditional usage permits if we do lease out an office space or...
As a C two, once it goes to C two, there are certain uses that are automatically allowed. Uh, the one thing that I would caution you about is C two does not allow any outside storage. So if somebody comes to you and says, I want to put a car dealership in here. That's an automatic, no, no. Uh, just tell them, I'm sorry, we can't have any inventory or any products of any kind staged or stored outside. So if a home, uh, like a, uh, like some landscaping operation wants to come, uh, that's fine as long as everything that they do is inside the structure. Alright, so...
And the building department can get you a list on what's allowed and what's not allowed.
So it needs to be inside. Y'all's default setting should be, can what they're proposing to do in my building be done inside the building? And if the answer to that is yes, more than likely, it's okay. Don't, uh, don't entertain anything that is medical marijuana.
Oh, no.
Unless you get completely squared up, not with just us, but with the, with the town of Pilahatchee as well.
Yeah, no, we're pretty, we're pretty opposed all of that.
Okay, those are...
Actually, we're extremely opposed all of that.
Those are going to be automatic, we need to have a conversation kind of queries. I bring that up because they're still out there looking for places to set those up, so we need to be aware of that.
Okay.
How much land is it total?
It's right at seven acres, it's just shy of seven acres, it's six point some odd, I can't remember exactly. But it's approximately a seven acre parcel.
Yeah, you got a question, Mark?
Yeah, I just, Buck, if you would, go to the assessor's office and give them the new address on your taxes because we see a lot of people come in and say, I didn't get my tax bill. And then we find out, well, the, the address is different. It's in the map, but that's not guaranteed. In three years, it may not say Buck on there. You just do what you feel comfortable.
Yes, sir.
Please do that address change because I just got through dealing with a man that lost his commercial property because of that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you guys for your time, I appreciate you. If you have any questions for me, I'm pretty easy to get ahold of.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone, is there anyone here to speak in opposition on this matter? I don't think that there is, gentlemen, so at this time, we'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action on this request.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Gentlemen, next item under my section D is a discussion of the David Key nuisance property. Mr. Key is, uh, deceased. Uh, so this is actually a discussion of the David Key Estate, uh, nuisance property at one sixty-three Pine Acre Places, District three par- parcel. Brad, do you mind kind of giving us a little background on this piece of property?
This is where, uh, we got a nine one one call, I don't know, a couple of months back and, uh, deputies and emergency response volunteered, the fire department went to the site, called. And, uh, of course, it was rundown with the cats and dogs and got pictures of it. And, uh, we had emergency here and Brady issue was here, I think, uh, a couple of others. And, uh, at that time, they were, we were made aware that... at that time, they were, we were made aware that she's already made contact with an individual that was going to tear the, uh, mobile home down and replace it with a brand new double wide. Well, that never came about. And this was back during the summer. Come to find out, she's still there at the house site. And, uh, of course, we've had a lot of people just asking, what's the county going to do about it? And of course, I think we got great to go back out there and we condemned the house to get the utilities off. The power was still on, the water was still on. And she's, I don't know if she's actually living in the house. She might be living in the car, but she's using the house to shower or whatever. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. So, as of now, I think we got a letter condemnation to send to the utilities.
That's right. So, so this is an issue that is not the same as what we normally have before us as a, as a nuisance consideration. This is one step beyond that. And so, I wanted to highlight for you guys that we're not using our normal process that we do where we, it, it looks very similar, but it's a slightly different process. Uh, we're using state law to actually ask the board, present evidence to the board through the fire coordinator, who has already conducted an investigation of this premises. And he will recommend that the board condemn it, uh, render it uninhabitable, uh, not allow anyone to live there. And that you understand why this is different from our normal nuisance consideration. A lot of times, we're not talking about properties that are uninhabitable. We're talking about properties that the condition has become or is approaching the level of just a public nuisance. That is, it's devaluing properties around it. Uh, it's unsightly. It's not, uh, it's not being kept up well. There's vehicles in the front yard. We don't ever get to a place normally where we say, no one can live in that house. And so, this one is one where we're telling you that the evidence will show that no one should live in this house. That's a, that is a step beyond where we normally go. Does that make sense to everybody? I hope it does.
And the utilities, they need some type of letter because, I mean, I'm not saying that the bills wasn't getting paid on electric and water, but they need some kind of letter from the county stating that, hey, we don't need provided service because they could be liable.
One of the best ways to render a property to be safe so that our emergency response can deal with it is to make sure that it's not electricity to it, make sure there's no gas to it, make sure there's no water to it. You get those things accounted for, uh, and it's a lot easier for us to deal with that property and to keep other people out of it. So, the utilities are telling us, we're not, uh, we're not going to make a unilateral decision to go cut the gas off, especially in the winter, when it's cold. Somebody may be in there and need heat. Uh, we're not going to cut the electricity off. It's in the winter. Somebody, somebody may need electricity to keep, to, to stay alive. We're not going to, we're not going to put ourselves in a liability risk. If you guys go inspect it and you find that it is not inhabitable and you intend to take it up, then we will receive that letter from you, from your fire coordinator, and we will take action on the basis of our own decision to go ahead and render the utilities cut off or, or whatever steps that they want to take. There's a multiple step in the process that we're trying to get ourselves ready to be able to utilize whenever we have these that come up. And I'm being told from some of you guys that we are seeing more and more instances where properties are in such a bad state that they really are not habitable. So, we want to be really well positioned to be able to deal with those situations fairly quickly. And we, but we've got to, we've got to follow the process or we won't be in compliance with state law. Part of that process requires notice. Notice. Notice to who? To the owner of the property. I told you when we started this that the owner of the property is deceased, Mr. Key. So, we are in a little bit of a conundrum here. We believe that the lady who is going in and out of the house is related to Mr. Key somehow, has some interest in the property somehow. And we are intending to get notice to her, although we can't establish, I can't establish for you today what her interest in the property is. She may be a partial owner. She may be an heir. She may be somebody that's beneficiary under will. But all of that information is unclear. Nothing's been filed with the Chancery Clerk's Office or with the Chancery Court to move an estate proceeding through the process. So, we're in a little bit of a trick bag here. So, we're going to do what we can to get as much notice. The statute that we're traveling under doesn't give us precise details of how we get notice to an owner, especially one that's deceased. Legislature didn't think about that. So, we're going to do the best we can to provide for the notice. Long and short of it is, at some point, the issue of notice is going to have to take a backseat because we have a genuine life, safety, and health issue that could impact not just people who are trying to go into the property, but kids in the community who might happen into the property somehow because it's not well secured. So, some, some of what we're trying to do here, we may be, our hand may be forced to do it. But I wanted to walk you guys through where we are. I, I'm telling you this in advance because the notice that we have provided is telling whomever is going to show up to be here on March the seventeenth. That's our next opportunity to address the situation. So, you'll be asked on the seventeenth to hear from Mr. Ishi or to receive his letter that provides his investigation report. Take that information in, make it a part of the record, and then take whatever step this board intends to take with respect to securing that property.
And I'd like to make sure we have some drafts on that day also.
So, the, the notification letter, I believe, has already gone out. Uh, so, we will, uh, we, we will hope to have some communication. I hope to have some communication from a member of the Key family.
Okay.
To help us, uh, get ourselves situated on this piece of property. This may come up frequently. It's the same problem we have, by the way, when we just handle nuisance considerations and we're dealing with an estate proceeding. I want to remind you guys, whenever we're dealing with somebody who is the owner, the record owner of the property who has died, we have an issue of notice. We're going to always have an issue of notice.
Friday in District Two?
Yes, sir.
On Thursday.
And, um, we, we may have to ask the legislature to help us figure that out with a little more clarity in statutes. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. So, that, I want to give you guys that information. Uh, you're not being asked to take any action today. That is just for discussion purposes. Um, if, Mr. President, if we may, we'll move on to item E.
Yes, sir.
This is something that we frequently do for sixteenth section parcels, uh, quickly, uh, from backgrounds. Uh, a lot of people don't understand, don't, don't realize that when they lease a sixteenth section parcel from the school district, not only are they required to pay the lease amount every year, they're also required to pay abhorrent taxes on that property. And so, it's a, it's a twofer. Uh, it's not unusual for us on sixteenth section leaseholds. It's not unusual for our situation to be that those abhorrent taxes just don't get paid. If you think about it, if we let sixteenth section leasehold property go through our tax sale, we're creating a lot of extra work for no good because a tax sale buyer cannot actually buy the land. Land is not what is being transferred. What's being transferred is the unexpired leasehold. So, they're not getting much. Uh, so, every once in a while, they will sneak their way into the tax sale and somebody will actually buy an unexpired leasehold interest. Now, when they figure that out, they hurriedly come back and say, I didn't mean that. I don't want that. And they try to undo it. But it's just extra work for our people. So, what we have decided, uh, unilaterally, your staff has just decided, don't push sixteenth section leaseholds through the tax sale. Just don't let them go through the tax sale. Uh, and so, what that does is it creates not work for my tax assessor's office or my tax collector's office or my Chancery Clerk's office. Creates extra work for the board lawyer. I get to be the one to try to go back now and invite people to come and pay the unexpired or the, the abhorrent tax obligations so that the lease can be transferred to a new tenant eventually, who then can come in and start paying the abhorrent taxes and not have a big tax bill to have to pay at the same time. So, it's better for everybody. School district to us, if we catch these things, if we keep them out of the land sale and if we try to take care of unpaid abhorrent that way, in invariably, we're going to have situations like this one that have been a part of an estate for years. I wish Jess was here. She could tell me. It's probably ten or twelve years' worth of unpaid abhorrent taxes associated with this property. Yeah. Several thousand dollars.
So, are we writing it off?
No, sir. Uh, we can't do that, Jay. The Constitution of the State of Mississippi prohibits us from writing off unpaid tax debt. So, we are going to authorize the Chancery Clerk's Office to receive, and the Tax Collector's Office, to receive the current year's tax obligation from a new tenant while the old tax obligation is still sitting out there. And I will attempt to try to collect that old tax obligation from whoever is responsible for the R.L. Till Jr. Estate. So, all we're doing is allowing the new tenant to be able to come in and take care of the current year tax obligation, some ninety-two dollars' worth instead of several thousand dollars' worth, right? That they didn't, they're not responsible for. They're a brand new tenant. We're also working with the school district to try to create a situation where a new tenancy cannot be created unless the abhorrent tax obligation associated with the old tenancy is satisfied. The school district says, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute. The abhorrent taxes hadn't been paid. You need to go get that straight and then we'll talk about transferring this lease. Hopefully, between the two systems, our tax assessor's office, tax collector's office, Chancery Clerk's office, all of whom are involved in these things, and the school district, between those two working together, we'll be able to cut these down. We probably got around fifty or sixty of these floating around, old sixteenth section leases that still have old abhorrent taxes owed that haven't been paid. And things have moved on. So, we've got a number of these we're having to deal with. Uh, so, from time to time, we have one like this where it just doesn't seem right or fair to ask somebody who's a brand new tenant to pay for decades' worth of old tax obligations that they didn't have anything to do with. And so, this will allow us to move forward with, uh, the new tenant and get those twenty-four taxes taken care of. I just need a motion to authorize item E as written? Motion.
Second. Steve made a motion. Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Slade.
Yeah, bless you. Uh, one item, uh, you, you know, there's going to end up being an executive session. This is a special one. Uh, we talked about this at length. Uh, we have a special guest that's going to be with us during executive session. This will be a personnel matter. Uh, and that, uh, executive session cannot begin before eleven A M.
Come on. So, we need to slow it down.
So, just wanted to warn you guys that there's going to be, have to be a little bit of a delay before we can go into executive session.
Can you make a phone call and maybe tell them we might be?
I, I actually already know ahead of time that that's not going to do us any good.
Okay.
We're, we're going to be stuck. We may get, uh, we may get a little bit of a head start and not have to wait all the way to eleven, but it's going to be pretty close, uh, to eleven before we can start.
Can we, ju- not just the fields and space and airtime, can we, Brian, if he is prepared, can you give us a little heads up in the county on what we're looking at in the next twenty-four hours, thirty-six hours, weather?
Weather. Yes, okay. I'm sorry. Uh, so, right now, it appears the National Weather Service is greatly concerned about our severe weather impact tomorrow afternoon. Uh, they've given us a timeframe of about four to eight based on experience. It's going to be close to, uh, seven o'clock time based on my experience. So, uh, they do expect some really, really strong winds, which is the last thing we need around here. But all day tomorrow, we're actually under a wind advisory for that. So.
I'll go ahead and ask, Mr. Harrison, is the boom truck ready for these winds?
Yes, sir. We're gonna grab it.
Good deal. Um, is it countywide?
Yes.
Countywide?
Yes.
You're advising this off of the Weather Service?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, that is very true. That is very true. Uh, they will bounce. We have a weather conference this afternoon at two-thirty to get a little bit more information on it. Um.
At two-thirty, I might come. Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah. We'll, we'll have it up and ready for anybody that wants to come watch.
Right.
Ryan, Ryan, have y'all adjusted the volume on the weather sirens in District Two?
Uh, well, the last time I was informed, we, we had them just right. So, uh, we're going to try to leave them.
But whether there's a volume knob somewhere along, it goes up to the left?
Yeah. Yeah. Max. All right. Any other questions about that?
Oh, thank you. Do we have any additional business?
Matthew, you want to speak on anything?
Oh, yeah.
You got something you want to be talking about if you have to.
Jay, you got anything you want to talk to Matthew about?
We do.
Oh, man. Uh, yeah, I want to know why he wasn't there helping me serve time. Not really. You don't have to say that. I know his son was in a competition.
Mr. Hicks, do you have anything?
I do. I have something that we can talk, that all of us need, just get this moving. And that is used secondhand mobile homes coming into the county. We really have very little guidance. We say that if they're aged or whatever, we'll then look it up, look them over. And it's pretty hard to regulate for our people, uh, when we don't have a hard date, hard year of how, how old they can be. And I'd like for us to just start that movement that we do have. Yes, sir.
Steve, a lot of municipalities, and I can speak definitely on the city of Richmond, it was over ten years old. It could not come in.
I like that.
Regardless if it looked brand new. On top of that, it couldn't come in until it was inspected outside the city of Richmond. Now, you couldn't bring it in and have it inspected. We sent an inspector to go inspect it.
Mark, is that, uh, any age of it, zero to ten?
Zero to ten.
So, inspected outside?
No, no. If it was ten, you know, yes, zero to ten. If it was over ten years old, it could not.
You're not even going to send somebody?
And zero to ten has to be inspected by the city inspector?
Not a brand new one. Not a brand, but a brand new one is going to be inspected anyway. But as far as they used on, if it's a day, second order, you know, it had to be inspected. If it was from, uh, you know, six months old to ten years old, if it was ten years and a day, it could not come in regardless of the shape. If it was vacant, let me say this too, if it was vacant for ninety days and over ten years old, it could, it was either pulled out of the city or it was taken out in a dumpster. Okay? So, those are some things you may want to look at when you're establishing on mobile homes to help clean up these old spots. Because we had the same problem, still have that problem, as these homes get older.
Yeah.
You know, but if it was vacated, was not lived in, or it was turned off, no electricity in ninety days, it was, and it was over ten years old, didn't matter about the shape.
At ten years, as long as it was well maintained and it just, the life ran?
If it was ten years, if it was over ten years old and.
In there, in the city already?
In the, in the city and it was.
The power hadn't been cut?
The power had not been on or water for nine, either one, for ninety days or nobody living in it. We went in and inspected it. It's gone.
Does the s- city pay for that? Did y'all pay for that or what?
We pay for it only if the landowner that owned the property didn't pay for it. And then, we would assess that landowner that cost.
I got you.
And it would become part of their next task, but we currently have one.
Well.
We got ordered for plated subdivisions, I think.
That's right.
We have an age limit currently.
Yeah?
Yeah, fifteen, I think.
Fifteen years.
Four plated subdivisions.
Four.
Four just plated.
We don't, yeah, but that's.
Out in the rural part, we don't have anything.
We, we.
That would help you clean up some of this problem you were just discussing this morning about that open house.
We, we're talking about. We, we're talking about something that, that my office has started looking at, along with C and P D D. Brian and I have been engaged, I think Ashley's been involved in that conversation as well. Mark's correct in that municipalities have a more aggressive approach to age restrictions and to the inspection piece, although I think our inspection ordinance is, is pretty aggressive as well. But most municipalities do have a much more aggressive approach to age restrictions than, than the county has up to this point been willing, except for platted subdivisions. So, in platted subdivisions, we have age limitations, I think it's fifteen years, if I remember correctly. So, it's not quite as aggressive as what you've heard. There's, typically, there is some, there's some common sense associated with why you would set a ten-year timeframe. And that has to do with how mobile homes are actually taxed for Avalon purposes. After ten years, they have no value. And so, they derive no Avalon tax. So, it doesn't benefit a lick, benefit the county a lick, to let units in here and set up that are already ten years or older. You're not gonna get a dime of Avalon off of that unit. Now, there's still an associated tax with the underlying property that somebody's paid for, but the structure itself is just not gonna pick up any value. And so, you see, and I, as a counter to what Mark was saying, that a, a lot of municipalities say if it's older than five years, because they wanna pick up at least five years' worth of Avalon tax impact, okay? So, that's very aggressive and probably would draw objections from interests around us, who may be in the mobile home selling business, or may be a part of an association that protects such things.
More of the rental business, we may have.
Yep.
I'm, I really would like, right now, for us to consider what we have for platted to just account. I, I like what Mark is saying.
I think we need to raise that up on the platted subdivision, too.
Well, I'm, I don't, I don't wanna try to... I don't wanna just, I don't wanna try to rebuild this. I just wanna use what we have and do it for the county.
So, you already have an inspection ordinance that requires for a unit to come into the county, it requires for there to be an inspection before it gets here.
Well, that...
Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't.
And the problem is, they go to the expense of moving it here. And if I don't understand, they get a permit to move it. But it hadn't been inspected. And it's well over ten or fifteen years. And then they're gonna try to get it up to our inspection. So, there's a lot more resources put in there. And it, uh, it causes them and us a lot of heartache.
So, one way to address that is through your zoning, by requiring, I'm just, we need to say, they're not outright allowed anywhere. You, they're ha- they have to go through some form of at least administrative review before they are permitted, regardless of zone.
Well, we, we've got enough, we've got more than enough that I can, just in my district, could be, hey, meet all the things that Mark say, says, oh, much older, and probably if they were inspected, would not make it. We've got those, a lot of places. And I have a heart for some of these people because if you tell them they've got to leave, they want a place to go. And they've lived here for generations in the same place. But to bring something in,
Yes.
to add to it with additional bringing in is just outrageous for us.
Steve, what, what, I want you to make sure you can understand these are mobile homes that's over ten years old
Yeah.
that have been vacated.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, not that somebody's living in.
The, the ones that I'm talking about, if they're vacated, i- if power's pulled off, they can't put it back on. But then that, that scares them to death is to not pay their electric bill because if that meter's pulled, they're not gonna get electricity again because even the power company says, "I can't hang a meter on it," you know, "until somebody gives me." So, that is...
That's your inspection ordinance working?
That's happening, it's happening.
We've done what we can.
We can make some changes to where we deal with the, the, uh, the rest of the county, you know, and have supervisors where they can sign off on it.
Yeah, it needs to be, I think, and Brian and I have talked about this, it, it needs to be at least an administrative review. And that way, it, there's, there's this check and balance that situations where it's a five-year-old unit, and it's in really good shape, and it's replacing one that's much older, that, that's one where if it's done administratively, you guys won't ever touch it.
Yeah.
I do like what, as far as Mark said, though, about the inspection prior to coming in.
Yeah.
If we could do that, that would probably save our people a lot of time.
We, that's what we have.
Yeah, we do that.
We did go inside?
Well, if it's in Rankin County, if it's out of the city limit, I mean, out of the county, then, I mean, like, city limits sometimes all go through, but we can't. Most of these are coming from Hattisburg, Biloxi.
So, what do we do in those situations?
We ask for pictures from inside, all around, outside.
And most of those dealers, the reputable ones, have had their hands popped. Y'all remember, we actually sued a, a installer and a mover for bringing one in Yeah, I remember. without any permit, and set it up, charged the dear lady a mint, got no, no permission whatsoever to set it up. And we actually pursued the installer, the seller, the installer, and the mover. And they learned a valuable lesson because of that, and they agreed from now on. So, we've got a list, I'm, Mr. Renee, we actually had a blacklist that we had of dealers, mobile home dealers, all around the state, where we had to educate them about moving a unit into Rankin County. So, they knew ahead of time, if this is going to Rankin County address, we gotta call somebody before. So, I'm, I'm not saying that we, that we have complete cooperation. I'm saying that we know where the bad ones were, and we got that corrected. And I think, for the most part, it works, for the most part. So, where, where we're struggling is that we don't have a hard and fast rule. We don't have a bright line rule on age. And that makes it hard on Ashley and Brian to look at a unit. It may look like it's just fine, but the thing, thing's twenty-two years old.
Well, just, and I don't wanna, I always use this, run more snakes out than we can kill. We have this fifteen-year for platted.
And I corrected, that's, it's actually twenty years.
I'd like to buy, twenty years is a little bit old to me, but, uh... Yeah, you gonna, I know we're gonna get a lot of, uh, pushback on, on ten.
You know, how expensive some of these trailers are now?
Yeah, new ones, new ones.
And we gonna tell them they gotta kick them out after ten years?
No, if they're still, yeah, if they're still living in it, they can, if it's fifty years old.
Somebody, if they sell it and it stays vacant for two months.
Three.
Three.
Three months.
I, I don't wanna get into, I don't wanna get into all that fight. I, I just really wanna put what we have of platted, and then we can later on decide what ages we're, I mean, if it's twenty years is a little bit long to me. Twenty years is pretty old. But we'll address that later. I think for right now, let's just open this up to county instead of platted subdivisions.
So, it's just our policy, right? We don't actually have anything hard and fast?
We can do it for District One, Two, Three, and Five. Because Steve don't mind stocking stuff in his area.
Well, he don't.
So, right now, your zoning has specific instructions if, if it is a platted subdivision, we have specific instructions. You have a separate permit ordinance that requires for anywhere in Rankin County, before a mobile home, manufactured house is moved in, it has to be inspected.
Yeah, kinda, it kinda has to be inspected.
Right, and so, that inspection, Steve, is, is typically, it doesn't necessarily relate to age. It relates to condition.
It's shall, not should, or should, not shall, I guess. How does some, we, some of them slip by us. Tell me, what's, what avenue do y'all see the most that they slip by us? Where we don't get an inspection? Probably, we don't have an attempt to inspect it until it's already there and set up.
Try, but it, what, what they look at to move it in is the condition of if it's livable, if it can be moved.
It's a very...
It's very...
I'm thinking of one that I've seen...
Now, most people, whenever they're pulling a permit, if it is on the older mobile home, we require them to give us a scope of work for the renovation to how we're gonna fix it up.
And that, do they still have to follow the procedures to get the utilities?
Yes.
The, the water gas or...
They don't release the power until everything is completely okay.
The, the one I'm thinking of, if it physically was inspected before it came in here, really, who did that?
It was, they don't have pictures.
But it was, at the time, we were operating under a policy that Renee had told Brian, if it could roll down the road, it was passable, basically. I think that's what Brian told us.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we changing the way we're doing that.
Okay.
And it needs to be, Steve, I think, just, this is off the top of my head, I may change my mind about this. It seems to me that having a, a hard and fast age requirement will prevent a lot of what you have observed, which is a set of pictures that came from a dealer somewhere down south that were taken in good light, taken from a distance, and you really couldn't see all of the issues. By having a hard and fast age rule, that unit probably would never have even been offered up to Rankin County because they would say, "Well, this unit's more than fifteen years old, this unit's more than ten years old. I, I can't sell that to you because you can't move it into Rankin County."
Yep.
So, that, that's a hard and fast way to address it. Nobody has to think about condition if it doesn't meet the age.
Right, right. Fifteen years, I mean, it, Ashley just said, it's twenty. I think fifteen-year is closer in alignment to what, I mean, you know, I've got, well, District Four, wherever it's at, I want it to be not, I want it to be where you would like to see what's across the street, you'd like to live there. And we have a lot of areas, like I said, that are not that way. They're not, uh, but damn sure don't wanna add more to it. And a twenty-year-old mobile home coming in is not adding value to anybody.
It's certainly not.
So...
Empirically, we can s- we can show zero Avalon
Yep, yep.
on, on that, on the value of that unit.
Yep, and it makes the Avalon for the properties around it, could, it could, for the properties around it, go down.
Agreed.
And anyhow, uh... Yes, oh, I'm not Mr. President, that's Mr. President.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Oh, yes, sir.
No, I was talking about, yeah, we just kinda redo some of that and, and look over it and, uh, kinda enforce our policies, what we, what we've got. All right, do we have any more additional business? All right, uh, we need...
Yeah, now.
Okay, we need, need for executive?
Yes, sir, we will.
But it's just for that, though, right?
Just, just for personnel.
Can we recess for an hour?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make most of recess.
I'll second that.
All right, Jay made a motion to recess for an hour, and...
Till eleven o'clock.
Till eleven o'clock. Scott seconded it.
Don't go too far.
Right, Scott seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, we were recessed till eleven o'clock.